Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Town of Dewey Beach Monthly Town Council Meeting. It's being held at Dewey Beach Life Saving Station as well via Zoom. Today is Friday, May 17, 2024, and it is 3:00. With that, I'd like to convene the town meeting with opening ceremony, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll follow with that with the roll call. Commissioner Bauer.
President.
Commissioner Gibbons.
Here.
Commissioner Jazinski.
President.
Commissioner Persinger.
Here.
And Mayor William Stevens is here. We also have our Fred Townsend, our council, as well as Town Manager Bill Zopper and Chief speak with us, all members of our community and police force. With that, can I have a motion to adopt the revised agenda?
Motion.
Reminded, or amended.
We dropped number six.
Dropped number six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Committee reports. Commissioner Jazinski.
No committee.
Commissioner Gibbons.
No reports.
Commissioner Persinger.
The, I know the audit is proceeding, but the Audit Committee is not scheduled to meet as far as I know. And the Charter and Code Review Committee will be meeting on the 29th of this month. They have a few things on their agenda, and I think we're going to be asking them to take another look at the pool issue that we just deleted from the agenda. The Climate Change Committee met last month. They're scheduled again to meet in July. It's a big committee. It's unusually large. I think there are 11 members on that committee. They spent some time at the last meeting, just kind of getting to know each other and understand what some of the issues are and what some of the sources of information are that they can draw on. So I expect them to come back in July, begin to work more intensely, I think, on some of the recommendations that were provided to us last year. That's it.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Bauer.
Dewey and Bloom, wanting to thank everybody that contributed to that and then also all the people who came out and volunteered. I think the town looks great. There's 28 boxes. And then the town manager took care of getting the ones on the Baywalk redone as well. So it's a lot of people to thank, especially Patrice, who put it all together. Nothing on budget and finance. We're done for a while on that. And marketing has some ideas, but nothing that reported this.
Great, thank you. Can I get a motion for the approval of the April meeting minutes?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Town manager update.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to thank Dewey Beach Business Partnership. They donated eight umbrellas to our lifeguards, and those umbrellas were over $300 each. They're kind of heavy material and everything they are, so I'd like to thank the partnership for that. On the 26th, which is Sunday, Memorial Day weekend, between the hours of 7:00 and 10:00, I've gone ahead and approved for an outdoor concert on the Bay Beach. There has been an alcohol license applied for and approved by the state. They have given us insurance for the, for the program. It will be a gated type of thing. There will be one lifeguard on duty for that also, that the vendor is paying for, and one police officer that the vendor is paying for, plus nine other security personnel there. I think it'll be a good trial, and I think it should go well. If it ends up raining, it's going to be moved inside to the Hyatt. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
Now, it's Sunday, Memorial Day weekend.
That's Sunday from 7:00, and it's over at 10:00. Just wanted to let everybody know about it. I'd like to thank Representative Pete Schwartzkopf. He was able to provide CTF funding for Dickinson Street on the Ocean Side. Del Dot had come through and said that side of the street did not need to be paved as part of their big paving project, which has been pushed to October. I disagreed with them. I took pictures. I sent it to them. They came back and still said it didn't need to be paved. So I went to Representative Schwartzkopf, showed him the pictures, did a write-up, applied for CTF funding, so we got $57,500 in funding for that street. I went out and got three bids, and that's the amount of money we'll be using. It'll be Isaac's paving. We'll have it done sometime after Labor Day weekend. Also, I want to thank Representative Schwartzkopf. He was able to find us approximately $12,000 for another radar trailer. You see the one on the north end. We'll have a second one. It'll be up to the chief. Where it's placed throughout the town, you could see it on King Charles, or you could see it on the south end of town. So again, thank, thank you to Representative Schwartzkopf for that. Really appreciate it. The pole that was knocked down, down with Dickinson Street and Route 1, the Police Department did a really good job on that, but it's going to be about 20 to 25 weeks before we can have a new pole put in. That's how long the company is saying it's going to take to fabricate the pole and get it put in for. So it's going to be like that the whole summer. I applied for a community reinvestment grant. If you remember, two years ago, we received approximately $3 million when that was done for our new town hall. I skipped last year. I reapplied this year for another amount, a little more than that previous amount. We'll just have to wait and see what happens. So that'll be next fiscal year if it's approved. The flaps have been installed down on the end of Reed Street. When I say flaps, it's the three stormwater pipes. RV and Standard Pipe came in and installed the flaps. I was down there most of the nights when the tide was in and out, trying to look at them, along with some of the other folks that live on that street. I do not believe the flaps are working the way they're supposed to work. I've told the engineering company, and I've told Standard Pipe that. I've asked them to come down and then look at the, and look at the flooding on the street during high tide. I sent them pictures of it today, and I'll be copying the mayor, Commissioner Jazinski, and the chairman of the Infrastructure Committee, Drew Martin, on that email back to them and those photos. But I don't believe the flaps are working properly, and we will not be making payment until they are. Lions Club requested sometime back in March for a speed bump to be put in near the playground there on McKinley Street. We had it put in on Wednesday. It'll be taken back up in September, around September 15th. There won't be a permanent speed bump there. There is a way, if you live on the end of Reed Street, that you can go around and avoid the speed bump altogether, but it was requested, and we did put it in by the, over by the playground for Lions Club to slow the traffic down coming up and, up and down that street. On the Baywalk with the flowers, we're going to do a little better job with those flowers. We put some flowers in, but we're going to increase those. We're going to put some more flowers in, probably in the next two weeks, to make it look a little nicer. We ended up putting two truckloads with the stones on Dagsworthy Street, on the Bayside, on the south side of the road where it gets really muddy when people pull in there to park where the grass areas are. We put two truckloads of stone in there. We're going to continue to do that around town. Now that they're not doing the paving in the north end, we won't have the millings to do that, so we're going to have to go out and spend the money to do it instead of getting the, the millings for free like I had hoped. We put a stop bar on the ground on Hayden Street. And in Reed, there was a request for something there. We also are putting a parking, no parking sign there, so when the cars pull out of Reed on, on Hayden, on the Reed, and they look, they'll be able to see traffic coming down without any issues. We're going to do lines this year around town. When I say line, that's for the, the driveways. You know, the two 10-foot are the 120-foot lines. We're going to do it by request, and as we see fit around town. I don't think it's worth us painting all the lines in town this year, and then Del Dot's going to come after October 1st and mill everything up and repave. We're going to waste a lot of paint, but we will be going around. The priorities are, of course, and they should have already been done, are the fire hydrants, the handicap parking, and the lifeguard parking. And then everything else, we're hitting the older lines from there. At the suggestion of one of the commissioners, Commissioner Jazinski, we're going to do a QR code. Kate did a QR code, and I'm, and I've ordered the placards for them. They're going to go underneath the Park Mobile signs, and you'll be able to go up to that QR code, and it'll take you right to frequently asked questions about parking. It'll take you right there. We've updated those. And then we also added photographs of what a 20-foot parking line looks like in front of a driveway, and what the L's look like. Those pictures are on there, so they, you know, if you have a question about what they look like, you go to that, and boom, it's right there. Kate's bringing it up now. So thank you for the suggestion, and I hope it helps our folks around town finding where they can and can't park and don't get tickets. Update on the new town hall. So as you know, the Fire Marshal, we mitigated what they needed. They did ask for a two-hour firewall in the EMS stairwell. So GMB did that. They had to resubmit all the plans back to the Fire Marshal again. We hope to get those back this week approved. Del Dot, we're still waiting for the utilities planning to be signed off on. Water conservation has been done. And then again, the ADA compliance, since we got the $3 million from the state, that should be done next week. 5G poles, I'll turn that over to Jim Deedee's to provide an update on that.
Thank you. We met last Wednesday on the 15th to discuss where we are with the Collins Avenue 5G pole. Attendees were representatives from the town, Verizon and CTC. Commissioner Bauer asked us to have a meeting to get resolution as to why the pole hasn't been moved as quickly as we thought. A permit was issued to Verizon, a continuation permit on old, issued to them, and that permit was based upon them moving the pole to a colocation pole. And that seems to have been the hurdle that we're trying to resolve. As it turns out, at the end of the meeting, we all agreed that they should meet the new cond, the, to consider the application process as a new application, not a continuation of an old one, so that we can meet all the ordinance requirements that exist. So at this point, we're, Claire DiNardo, Representative Arianda, representing the Verizon, said that would take them probably 100 days to comply with the new code, with the ordinance. So that's where we stand at this point. So we really, again, we have three poles that have been moved. Two remain, and Collins we're working on. We have not heard anything as far as movement on St. Louis, and we decided we'll defer that discussion till we clear up Collins Avenue. Any questions?
The only comment or question I have is, aren't those funds due to expire in September?
They are. We're going to ask for an extension, and I think we'll get it for at least a year, but we won't know that until we actually apply for it.
Okay. That's, within, it's pretty close with 100 days.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it will be. Pending any questions, that's all I have. And with that, if there's any questions, if not, I'll turn it over to the chief.
Commissioners? Thank you, Bill.
All right, I'm going to start off my comments by welcoming PFC James Riley. Mayor, if you want to come up. James, if you want to step up.
Welcome, James.
Give me one second. So today, we welcome PFC James Riley to our agency. We're very lucky to have him. He came to us from Millsboro Police Department after working there for two years. He attended the Dover Municipal Police Academy. He is a Millsboro native and has lived in Sussex County his entire life. He's number 10 out of 11 siblings, and currently lives on his family farm where his family has lived there for five generations. He's been a member of the Millsboro Fire Company since he was 15 years old. So he's very excited to be here and try something new, and we're very lucky to have him. So with that, we're going to swear him in.
And he knows about the 10-year contract?
Yes.
14. 14, sorry. Please raise your right hand. Aye, James Riley.
Aye, James Riley.
Do some of the square.
Do some.
That I will uphold, support, and defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Delaware.
Of the State of Delaware.
That I will fairly.
That I will fairly.
And equally.
And equally.
Enforce the laws.
Enforce the laws.
10 ordinances.
10 ordinances.
Of the State of Delaware.
Of the State of Delaware.
And the Town of Dewey Beach.
And the Town of Dewey Beach.
That I will discharge.
That I will discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the Town of Dewey Beach.
Of the Town of Dewey Beach.
Police officer.
Police officer.
According.
According.
To the best.
To the best.
My ability.
My ability.
And with fidelity.
And fidelity.
Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
There's a 14-year contract.
Hopefully, this county's still here for 14 years.
I'll be 100 and 20.
I have faith in you.
Let's take a picture. You guys get ready to go on to that. Thanks for coming.
Keep the streets safe, gentlemen.
Sir, you too.
Chief, anything else?
Yes, I have some other things. All right, so with the addition of James, we now have 12 police officers here, which means we have one opening left. We are currently training our 11 seasonal officers. They will graduate and get sworn in next Thursday, if you'd like to attend at the Lions Club at around 4:00. So we'll do what we did last year. We'll present them with their certificates, and Rhonda will be swearing them in.
Okay, get on in me. Good.
I offered a position to a new full-time dispatcher this week. Her name is Shelley. I'm hoping to have her starting on June 1st. She actually has 27 years with Newcastle before she retired as a supervisor, dispatch supervisor, and she worked for the state police for two years before that. She's been retired for about, I would say about 18 years, taking care of her grandkids, but now she wants to come back in the workforce, so she's going to be a great addition to our staff. Our charging stations are set up. We're just waiting on the e-trucks to arrive. Hopefully, I was told they'll be here by the end of May, then we'll send them out to get marked and get all the equipment put on. So they should be here soon. And I'm putting in all the, the grant reimbursement paperwork once we have everything finalized, so we'll get reimbursed for all that equipment. Also, the new Ford Explorer that we purchased under this year's budget is already out on the street. It got finished last week, so we have another vehicle out there now, which is great. We have enough vehicles for our three officers that are on FTO, because James started May 1st, and he came as a lateral, so he doesn't need to be in field training that long. Colby and Dylan will also be getting off of field training at the end of the month. So our three new officers that have gone through the academy and all the training will be out on the street as solo officers by the end of the month, which is great news. What else do I have? Oh, let me do my stats for you. All right, so for the month of April, we had 403 calls for service, 149 traffic citations, including warnings, 43 parking tickets, nine accidents, 38 criminal investigations, one DUI arrest, one ordinance arrest, nine criminal arrests for adults, one criminal arrest for juveniles. We had 23 warrant arrests, 52 complaint reports, 210 traffic enforcement hours, 23 UTV patrols, and 141 business checks. So those stats, as you know, will be starting to climb once our season starts and we get, so by Memorial Day weekend, once we swear our season was in on Thursday, Friday, everybody will be here, and they will be here five days a week, and we'll be rocking and rolling. That's all I have.
Great. It was a busy month.
Yes.
Just as a, as a comment that, since you alluded to it, Robin, Rhonda McIntyre, who's been working with us for three years and was our candidate for alderman, was approved by the governor, and so she was sworn in on Thursday, yesterday, as our alderman. So just as everyone knows.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Now open up for public comment for any non-agenda items. Anyone for public comment? James?
Probably good idea.
My name is Jim Deegan. I live at 103 Hayden Road. Mr. Persinger, thanks for returning my email. I did not get an email from anyone else. Unfortunately, I do, I believe that I voted for the town council, and I asked you to represent me. I didn't vote for the police of Chile. I did not vote for the town manager. I voted for you. This issue of anybody and their brother can ask for a speed bump without any documentation is ridiculous. I have been a property owner on that road since 2001. I have lived down there full-time since 2014. I have no idea what the Lions Club is talking about traffic. How many Lions Club members live on that street and can actually visually and document that there's a traffic issue down there? I went to the Del Dot website, who did a traffic count in the off-season. 71 vehicle things in 14 days. So if myself and my wife count for four a day, plus the mailman, plus the trash truck, there's no traffic down that street. There are only five condos in my association, Sunset Bay, that do not live there full-time. There are two vacation, two rental properties on the corner of Hayden. The most traffic we get on Hayden Road is when the Dewey Beach Lions Club has an event. It's a, it's a cluster down there. When the bike ride of the beaches, they block up Hayden, they block up McKinley. I am, again, how can, how can an entity like the Lions Club request a speed bump when they are not there physically to witness anything? My deck and my kitchen table overlook the Lions Club. The only thing that I have seen is maybe a kid fell off a tree and hurt, broke their arm or something. I've been around when the tree got killed. I was around for other activities and have never, ever, ever, ever witnessed any speeding, any semblance of disturbance at that park that would warrant a speed bump. I have two low-profile vehicles that I feel the speed bump when I go over it. There is no way that we need a speed bump, and again, that is a manager's call without any documentation. Oh, I want you to speed bump. Yesterday, I turned left. One of our commissioners was walking down the middle of the street. How can you speed when you got drunks and commissioners walking down the middle of the street? You can't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deegan. Was I the commissioner?
No.
Anyone else here for public comment?
Good afternoon. Vince Stefanzo, I represent the Hyatt and actually the Surf Club here. And I would just like to thank the chief for doing a training for our staffs and actually some of the people for the Rudder this, I think last week, I was out of town, for active shooter training. And I heard nothing but her and her husband conducted it with all of our managers and some of our employees. And I heard it was great, and for other people in the community to take part in something like that, because you never know the crazy things that happen. I just wanted to publicly thank you, and everyone's talked great about it.
Well, I agree, Mr. Deegan.
Yep, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Anyone else here for public comment? Kate, anyone online?
You have a bunch of people in the Zoom room.
Okay.
No one reached out via chat, so I would just say if anyone is in there that would like to make comment, they can go ahead and unmute.
All right, we'll get into the action items. First item on our agenda is discussion, possibly vote to refer to the planning and zoning commission of proposed expansion of an existing conditional use for the property located 1308 Coastal Highway, Dewey Beach, Delaware, formerly known as MAP 23.06, parcel 20.00, located in zoning District RB2, as submitted by Reagan Derrickson, authorized member of Nalu LLC. I'll ask Reagan, or if you want to come up and.
He's over there first.
Okay. Whoever you want.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members. For the record, Elio Batista Jr., Parkowski, Gurkanswazi, on behalf of Nalu LLC. As you, as the mayor indicated, we're here for a conditional use application for the expansion of the Nalu location, 1308 Coastal Highway. A plan was submitted, and recently this week, upon conversations with town officials and council, a revised plan was submitted that we believe fully brings the application into compliance with town ordinances. The plan complies with all legal requirements. It's appropriate and well-thought-out. It's conscious of the public health, safety morals, and general welfare. There's adequate off-street parking and compliance with the town ordinances, as reflected in the updated plan. And Nalu has included necessary safeguards for the protection of surrounding property, persons, and the neighborhood values, which Mr. Derrickson can address. And unless anyone has any questions for me, it is my opinion that no one comes out on a Friday at Dewey Beach to hear a lawyer talk. So I'm going to give the podium to.
Thank you, sir.
I don't have too much to add outside of the cover letter, if you guys read it that I sent you, just basically the history of Nalu and the expansions and the variations that we've gotten to this point today, and why I'm back here with this application to do an expansion on Nalu as since the code has changed with the parking. I also have Kyle Hamilton from Design Del Marva that's been working very hard on this plan to get it exactly where it hopefully needs to be. But love to take any questions you have right now on this project.
So you're taking the stage outside of the main airing?
Well, if you, in the cover letter, I mentioned about, you know, being sensitive to noise, even though I believe, and someone else can say otherwise, that we've been in compliance to making sure that we're under the ordinance for noise, but this stage will make us more than compliant, in my opinion, by relocating it more inside where it is now, next to the sliding glass door.
Right.
Where those two tables are now with the new plan.
Commissioners, any questions for Reagan?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Let me get to, on the, on the.
While you're looking, can I quickly just.
Yeah, please.
So I'm stepping away from the microphone. I have to talk loud. This is in, inside, right?
Yes, the expansion's all inside.
So the stage is inside, and all of this is inside. This is the current outside.
That's the current outside.
Thank you. It was clear in the second drawing, but I just wanted to make sure that I. Got it, thank you.
Okay, so there was a note, lower-left part of the plan there. I can't see it anymore, but it talks about the total square footage of dining space. Is that intended to be the total patron area? That's the limitation that's shown in the parking regulations.
The total dining area on the left side of that plan is the patron use area, 3,998.
So just under the 4,000, 4,000 limit.
Yes, sir.
Does, does that calculation include all of the elements that's in our definition of patron area in the code?
To best of my knowledge, it does.
So it would include seated dining areas, standing bar areas, bar top areas, always enforcers, accessible customers, customer waiting areas, and recreational facility areas, but excludes restroom, service, kitchen, storage, and office areas?
Yes, sir.
So that, it would include all of its elements. Okay, thank you. Then the other question that I had, the other, I can draw it itself. The, the, the existing sliding glass doors that are there now that allow access to the outdoor patio, this would all stay there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then you remove the stage around to the other, other side. So you're removing the decorative wall that's there now and putting in sliding glass doors?
The.
I don't remember how big that wall is, but.
Are you talking right here?
Bucks, we can't.
Yeah, yes, right there, yes.
The waterfall.
Yeah.
The waterfall wall.
The waterfall, yes.
So right now, this is liquor storage, DJ booth, and the stage is right here.
Right.
So we'll be taking all that away, and this will be an open indoor hallway to get to the new expanded area.
Oh, okay.
So everything, so that wall will stay there?
So the sliding glass door that's.
Will be on the left and the right.
Right here stays exactly the way it is. The stage, the DJ booth, and the closet that's here all gets removed, and this gets opened up into the new spot, and this is all inside.
No, but are there sliders then, on the left and the right of the waterfall, I think?
Yeah, those are the two.
Yeah, so there's sliders.
This is where the waterfall is now. So that gets taken away, and the new sliding glass doors would go in.
And would those be open all the time, or, I mean, weather permitting, I assume, or is that your intent?
It's extended the same way that I do the current sliding glass doors on the.
Okay, well, my, my question is, because you've turned the stage around, there's a potential there for you to have the speakers pointed toward the outdoor dining area, which I think is not consistent with the code. The outdoor dining area does say that any interior speakers have to be, should not be focused or facing the outdoor space.
Well, on a stage, the speakers are, the monitors on there are pointed at the musicians singing the music. As far as the speakers that would be in for the restaurant, those could be surrounded or placed in the entire expanded area, just like any restaurant for atmosphere. So there is no direct speakers shooting out to the, the deck.
But they, they could be focused in a way so that they would just go to the interior space where the stage is?
I will stay within compliance and put the speakers where they need to be intended so they're not doing anything to break the code.
Okay, so they would not focus out? That's my other question.
The, the audio hasn't been put in yet, but I'll make sure that they're not breaking what you don't want me to do.
Okay, no, that's, I just want to make sure we're consistent with the code, that's all. Other than that, I don't have any other questions.
I think it looks great. As far as I know, the square footage is under the limit and playing within rules as you always do, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, this is, this is not obviously for us to vote. This is to refer to the planning and zoning commission. Obviously, when it goes to planning and zoning, then it sends it back to us based by recommendation. It will go through that, the calculation verification for Dawn and obviously she's going to be looking at the speaker, the noise. So with that being said, can I get a motion for item number one?
Motion.
Second?
Any other discussion? Not seeing any? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seventeen more minutes to get your record.
It's not going to happen. Number two, review and discuss March and April financials. The financial statements have been posted, are out there in the March, obviously has not been amended for, for any audit adjustment journal entries as they're going through the audit. As in prior years, we can expect to have some adjusting journal entries or reclassification journal entries, but they're posted. So I'll ask council if there's any questions that you have concerning the financial statements that were presented. I think we're looking good.
I, I had questions about the...
Please ask.
Some of the fund balance information, but, and just half an hour before the meeting, I saw that there was a new fund balance analysis. I thought that was pretty straightforward and for the most part self-explanatory, so thank you for doing that. That's all I had.
All right. Let's move on to number three, which is discuss and possibly vote to...
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, go, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Discuss and possibly vote to allocate unassigned funds to self-committed funds. There is an analysis on the website, which Gary just, Commissioner Persinger just alluded to, that shows the possible, where we were at the end of March from a fund balance standpoint as well as proposals to, to assign funds, I guess is the best way to put it, to those unassigned. So simply put, the net income from the 2024 of 843, 163 would be allocated to those funds. What is being proposed is making the streets and infrastructure, this is for conversation, 600,000, based upon the fact that 25 and 26 is 400, and so just adding another 200 in there for, assuming there's going to be street projects that we're going to need. Public safety fund to be left alone, but knowing that we'll use 90,000 of that potentially for vehicles and/or the CAD system and vehicle cameras that need to be, that we're going to install. Nothing affected on the beach safety fund. Capital improvements at 298, in which what you can see the reconciliation below, again, it's a three-year lookout in terms of what we're going to need. And there's with the 298,000, the TNA is traced and agreed, just so everyone knows what the TNA reference is. Town hall is the plug, so I'll, you know, leave it there to, and the reason why I bring that up is because if there are any other changes associated with the financial statements, everything else but the town hall number would change in terms of those allocations. Finally, the rainy day fund at one-half the budget, 2,657, and the unassigned at 15%, 797. So I'll throw it out to council for any comments or questions or if Sheena, if you have anything additional that you want to say? No? Okay.
So I am a little confused. As I said, I just saw this new fund balance analysis that happened an hour before the meeting. So I'm not, where does net income of 843,000 come from? That's very different than what's on the, the March sheet. And I thought we were talking about 400 and something.
That's after the set asides.
And why would that be not be part of, why would we not take the set aside job looking at net income?
Excuse me, I'm a little slow this morning. Where did I find that? We were, the set asides have been done throughout the year as per your request. The 843 that you're, that you're working with is of the, what you like to call the operating. And your set asides are not part of your operating, the way you're looking at it. So they've been taken out. It's, by not doing government accounting financial statements, it's kind of hard to take it from here to here. That's where I'm having the trouble explaining this to you. We did have, before the set asides, it was like 980 something, the set asides were 499,000. This here, it takes into account all the money that's already been set aside when we did it. This is not making sense and I understand.
No, it's...
I, I know what I'm trying to say.
So let me ask you this question, Sheena, on the, and just using one for an example, the 682, 398 streets and infrastructure.
Yes.
That, does that include the funds throughout fiscal year 2024 that were reclassified into that based upon the set aside calculations month to month to month?
Yes, sir.
It would seem that the 843 is too high. Yeah.
Because that would be the same for capital improvements potentially?
Yeah.
Or, or the town hall funds or...
The capital improvements...
The rainy day fund.
The rainy day fund has 2.6 million and, or 2.3, almost 2.4 million.
The 2395574.
Correct.
Okay.
We need to get to the 2657. So that, that is inaccurate. The, the, unassigned is overfunded because everything flows through there. That, right now, has been the plug. The capex is exactly, is an accurate number. It's, the, the starting number... I shouldn't be doing this video because I wanted my day off.
No, no, it's okay. So I think, I understand Commissioner Persinger's comment and I understand where we are. I think that the, and this doesn't have to happen today, it could happen next month, but I think what, the things that we know that we need to do is to put the rainy day fund at 2657, which is one-half.
Yes.
And 797, which is the 15%. So we know those two, those can happen. I think the question for council is, are we okay with streets and infrastructure at six or to leave it at 682? Are we okay with moving the capital improvements to 298 versus 158, knowing that, again, the balance goes into the town hall fund? And, you know, obviously we'll get to, you know, make sure that there's no double counting, but those numbers are set in stone based upon our budget?
Right. Yes, they are.
So, I mean, the two things that we have to do, you know, I guess we have to do, I don't see a big issue. I think what you're really trying to do is get more money for town hall.
Yes, sir.
That's really what the objective is. And we all know we're doing the town halls, especially since the fire marshal issue. So, I mean, you know, I kind of view it as we've got to do what we've got to do.
Well, but I think we need to, so because of the set asides that go into, for example, into streets and infrastructure, I think we need to, as council, have a vote to move X, move funds.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But I think we've got to do it, you know, so we can get our town hall done.
But we can't move streets and infrastructure money to town hall. That can't, that, the charter, the code doesn't allow that. So that's, that's not a, an opportunity there. Where we have an opportunity is where there are excess funds from operations for the last year. And I thought that that was something like 484,000. That's based on the, one of the pages in the March, April financials that were posted. So that you, you had additional, so we had what you called net proceeds of 484,000. You take the rainy day fund up to 2657, you take the unassigned fund down to 797, and capital expenditures based on your other sheet of 296, you end up with a surplus of just over 200,000, which I thought we could put toward the capital expenditure fund for the new town.
Okay.
That makes sense to me, but...
Let me ask you a question, though. I mean, the streets and infrastructure allocation, that's something that we self-impose upon ourselves, so with a vote, why can't we alter it in any given year if we need to? I'm just trying to understand.
Change the code.
So you're saying we'd actually have to change the code, right?
I believe that's, that's...
That's for the 20%, correct? What about the...
Well, that's for the 20%. It's also for the use of the funds.
The, I'm, I'm, but as far, there's also other funds that go in to the streets and infrastructure. There's 5% of the parking and there's 3% of transfer tax.
And we, you're right, we could, we could change that. That's not part of the code. 20% is part of the code. And how we use the funds, how the town uses the funds is part of the code.
Well, I get your point. Tom, everything?
So what we'd really like to do is once we reach 600,000, instead of any more money going into that, have the money go somewhere else. We've reached 600,000. We feel that's a budget that we will need to operate street and infrastructure. I mean, something could always pop up, but a little over a million dollars is a lot of money for us and we think that anything else, instead of going there, should go into other places.
So you want to, from a policy perspective, try to maintain a balance of 600,000 on an ongoing basis, year to year, and that funds to meet whatever we're going to be doing in streets and infrastructure? Is that what you want to do?
Right, so like, so if this year we use 450,000 or we still have 450,000, next year we may only have to fund it 150,000. Right? Instead of every year, we're just, we continue to grow and it's good, but I think the money needs to be used in other places.
Well, to Gary's point, I think we don't have an encoding mechanism to automatically be doing that if that's policy perspective, what you want to do. But I'm still wondering why, as a one-time allocation, we can't make a vote to move funds. I'm just not really clear that we can't do that as commissioners.
Well, no, it's just to say, it, it's not, it's not urgent for us to make sure that we're compliant with the code and moving those funds around. I think, I think everything else, it makes sense of moving, like, for example, funding non-town hall capital improvements to make sure those funds are in there for that, for the period of time. But maybe there's a possibility that in a subsequent meeting, if we do see fit, to cap certain funds at an amount based upon the set asides, which I believe is what the town manager was stating.
So if we're going to, if we're going to do that, I think we also have to definitely get Drew's input.
Sure.
Into that.
Drew Marks.
Yeah, because he's got the, he's got the bigger view of what he wants to do over years and, you know, he's got, I'm not saying you don't have a view.
Sure.
He's in terms of the committee, that has a viewpoint on what their funding needs are going to be over the coming years.
Do we need to, can we refer that to them for their review?
I can't.
Or we can't right now to come up with it because it wasn't an agenda item stated as such? I think your points, we'll take it. I didn't, I...
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what the right process is. I think, I don't see any reason why it has to be a formal referral to them. Fred, you can disagree, but I don't think it has to be a formal referral. You can simply ask them to, to look at this. But yeah, I think if you're going to start taking money out of that account and allocate it somewhere else, there's, there's a problem with doing it.
So why don't we have that committee take a look?
Yeah.
And refer back and we'll hold off on moving the 682 to 600, but the other changes are...
Well, I, I'm not ready to vote on this because I'm not sure exactly what we're voting against because we have that 843 as opposed to what I think was the net operating balance of something like 480 something. And, you know, I'm trying to get to how much money is there really that we could add to the town hall fund. It seems, based on one, one sheet, it's, it's about 200,000, which makes some sense to me.
Right. If, to get to the final steps for the audit, because I'm submitting everything on Monday to them, if we can just get the authorization to fund the rainy day and the 15%, then that's, I can tell the auditors, then the rest, we, that and the capital, those two and the capital improvements, then the rest we're fun, falling is the wrong word, we're focusing towards the town hall, once we have a more solidified number.
Well, I have a different comment, which is if by, by our code, the, you know, we have to, the rainy day fund and the, the operating fund happen, I don't think it requires a vote from council because it's mandated that it's at 50% and 15%.
That's not, that's not the town code, that's...
Well, self...
Our fund balance policy.
Fund balance policy, yeah, which...
I'm looking in E-code. I guess the only spot it would be in is under the investment policy, correct?
No. You're talking about the streets and infrastructure fund?
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the code words.
I forget exactly where it's at. It's not, it's not investment, it's somewhere else. It's, you know, we have to put in 20% of the building permits, like I was saying, automatically. I think that's part of the code, but what's not part of the code is the additional percentages we take from other things like parking revenues. Do you know how much in total those additional allocations amount to each?
93.2.
Just approximately, I can't remember myself.
Well, it's 5% of parking, of the seasonal and daily parking, not the meters. So 5% of, say, a million dollars right there is your parking and 3% of 500,000 for transfer tax. So it's, so 15...
I have it here. So 50% of hotel tax goes to streets and infrastructure, 3% of transfer tax goes to streets and infrastructure, 5% of seasonal and daily passes, not meters, goes to streets and infrastructure. 5% transfer tax goes to the rainy day fund, oh, and 20% of building permits goes to streets and infrastructure.
50% of the hotel tax goes to the town hall.
It does now.
It was...
Well, it never, it never went to streets and infrastructure. It either went to capital improvements or it went to, as it does now, the town hall.
This year, we did about 71,000 from transfer tax and parking toward, towards the streets and infrastructure, above the 20%. So about 71,000.
So that's, that's money that could be reallocated if we wanted to.
Right.
But that would be going forward. I'm just not sure, once the money gets into the streets and infrastructure, I think you're probably stuck with spending it the way the town code tells you you have to spend it. It's not a matter of being able to reallocate something like that afterwards already in there. Correct me if I'm wrong, please.
I recall that we need a recommendation from the chairman of that committee in terms of how we expend funds, isn't that correct?
I think that's right.
Yeah. And of course, that committee's charge is for streets and infrastructure. I mean, I think there are more obvious reasons why that's the case, but I think that, I'd have to look at it. I wasn't anticipating this question and I don't, I'm not finding the language that I was looking for in the code, but I think that's the case, that the allocated funds are devoted to those purposes. So I don't know if we need to vote on anything since it's unclear in terms of the amounts that are, that are going to be transferred, but it asks that, that committee take a look at the fund balance, the balance in there and determine, you know, if that bill meets their three-year needs.
Yeah.
Okay. So motion to table? Or do you want more comments?
Well, I think the capital expenditures we could vote on, I think that's unrelated to this issue, the streets and infrastructure issue, I believe. The unassigned fund and the rainy day fund, those, those amounts are based on the fund balance policy, so I'm not sure that we have to even vote on those. Then the only issue again is how much additional money is there left and what do we do with that?
Anything in excess, I would assume we put towards town hall, maybe that's the vote.
That would be my, my preference certainly, yeah. That would be my preference.
All right, so we'll put out to the streets and infrastructure for them to review the budget to see if there's any, if it's a reallocation.
You said, you said three years and I think what we're proposing to, understanding correctly, is that every year when we adjust after our results and what we've spent, you want to maintain a 600,000 balance in there unless what's in the code won't get us to 600 because we spent so much money a year before, then you might be at 550. You spent too much money and the 20% of this and that don't add up to get to the 600, but that's basically what you want to do. 600 is basically a cap on an annual year basis.
Unless we come up with some reason that we need more, but the money sometimes sits there and I think we could use it in other places.
Okay.
Sheena, could you provide the council next week with just an analysis of how much we spent per year out of the streets and infrastructure over the last five years? Just to see what we average over that period of time?
Sure. No problem.
Okay.
Thanks, Sheena.
All right, so are we going to do a motion to... All right, so are we going to do a motion to, to make the amendments for the capital improvements going from 155 to 288, to fund the rainy day fund, to fund the unassigned 15%?
Yeah.
And the balance for town hall?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. Would that game through your auditor deadline?
Yes, sir.
All right.
He just read.
So, second.
Okay. And, and with, okay. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Number four, discussing the following items referred by Charter and Code Review Committee, and again, this is discuss. I'll ask Commissioner Persinger to go into some depth, but this is for amendments, the First Amendment, Chapter 1-16, definition of the code of defined terms relating to property maintenance and repairs, and secondarily, differences between the routine maintenance and repairs of commercial property versus residential property, assess the needs to private, to provide these specifications in the code. Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, I really think that we need to discuss four and five together, agenda items four and five together, because they really are linked.
That's fine.
If you will. There has been a lot of time spent on this. The genesis of this was, some representatives from Highway 1 came to the Charter and Code Committee, Code Review Committee, and asked that they consider some ways of accepting from the building permit process, routine repairs and maintenance items that they face particularly on a very regular basis during the summer season. And they want to be good citizens, they want to be good participants in our, in our building permit process, but, you know, to, to go through the full process and wait for a decision from the town officials before they can make decisions about going ahead with repairs really doesn't work for them sometimes. You know, on a busy weekend, they may have a number of maintenance items that need some immediate attention, and they need a way of proceeding with those. So the committee began to consider some specific ways of accepting certain situations from the building permit process. There was a draft ordinance that legal representatives for Highway 1 presented to the committee. There had been several conversations involving building official, chairman of the Code Review Committee, these are discussions with FEMA, and also with DENRECK, because they have some involvement in this area as well. I was part of a couple of those discussions, and, you know, we went, we really explored this at length. And I think the conclusion that both of us have come to, perhaps all of us have come to, certainly the building official and the chairman of the committee, is that we don't really have a legislative solution to this. There is the potential, perhaps, for some administrative approaches that would make the process a bit more efficient, but for us to begin to define exceptions within our town code could put our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program at some risk, and we certainly want to avoid doing that. And let me just say why I say that. There are three sections of the code that define, or that really regulate construction and repairs and maintenance, that sort of thing. Section 71 of the code sets forth all the conditions for applying for a building permit. There is an exception for projects that involve material costs of less than $1,000. So according to that section of the code, if you have such a project, you don't have to have a building permit for that project. The other section of the code that governs all of the properties in a flood zone, and that's pretty much two-thirds of the properties in Dewey Beach, is Section 101, our flood reduction, flood damage reduction section. And that has some specific requirements. And part of that requirement is that all projects basically have to have a permit. What it says is that any new construction and any other development must have a permit. If you look at, and there are some materials, if you had a chance to look at some of the background materials for this, there are some materials that, explain this a little bit better, but the, the interpretation that basically everything that's done in the, in a flood zone property has to have, has to be permitted, is based on a broad definition of the word development. And I highlighted that in the background section, is it basically says that development means any man-made change to improve your unimproved property in a flood zone area. So despite the fact that you can find in some of the FEMA materials, it's pretty easy to find exceptions in the FEMA materials for things like patching your roof, or painting, or some other things that clearly would not affect the flow of floodwaters around any given property in the flood zone. In our conversations with them, they have, in essence, told us they really care about everything. They want to see documentation on everything. Part of that relates to the requirements for making sure that a property, that a property is not improved in such a way that it represents more than 50% of the market value of the building on that property. And that's true for damage as well. If you have a damage, if your property is damaged, and the cost of repairing that damage is 50% or more of the current market value of the building on that property, then you have to comply with all of the flood zone regulations. So your, the first floor of your building has to be at least as high as the base flood elevation that FEMA specifies for that particular area, and then you add on top of that the freeboard that our town code requires. So, lost my train of thought there for a second, but based on that very broad definition of development, we believe that there needs to be documentation for virtually everything that's, that's done on properties in the flood zone. So the solution that I've been trying to propose or promote, I guess, is that there ought to be for some sort of a way of leading people through an online process in the right direction, so that if you set a new threshold, let's say it's $3,500 in material costs, or maybe it's $7,500 in total project cost, there is a way online to ask, to answer a series of questions that would direct you either to getting a full building permit, or perhaps getting, providing a description of your, if it's less than $7,500, for example, a description of the work that you're going to do, and, and the cost, the total cost of doing that work. And then you could, you could get a permit, per se, but you would not have to go through a full building permit process that would require, you know, intense involvement of the building official. You really could do that virtually simultaneously with your application. That would allow repairs to proceed on a very quick basis. The town would still have the information on the cost of that project, and they would be able to track the cost of projects over time, if that became something that we wanted to do as well. There are a number of, there are municipalities, Bethany is one of them, that tracks the cost of projects, repairs, and other improvements longitudinally. Bethany does it over a 10-year period, so that all of your improvements that are done, those are, you keep the sum of those, and then you compare that against the current market value of the property. If it's 50% or more of the market value, then you have to comply with all of the.
Is that the FEMA requirement, or is that just what Bethany chooses to do?
That is what Bethany chooses to do, but it is a recommended process that exceeds the basic FEMA requirements.
The 50%, though, is FEMA.
Yeah, 50%. I was just wondering if you were looking back. That may be one thing to do. I think there is some value in preventing a situation where a property owner does a renovation or makes some improvement that's 40% of the property value or the building value this year, and the next year comes back with another renovation, it's another 40%. So, you know, you might track it over 10 years, but you also might do something over two or three years to prevent that, that kind of situation. I say that, you know, it's, it's, I think, not advisable for us to begin to develop any exceptions, that the, the language that we have in Section 101 of our flood damage reduction is very much standard language. You can go to Bethany, you can go to Fenwick, you can go to South Bethany, and you'll see either the identical language or almost identical language. They all use the same definition of development. And I would note that South Bethany, up until the early April last month, the, they actually had some building, they had some exceptions built into their, their town codes that would allow them to, would allow property owners to proceed with certain types of projects if they met certain conditions. Those were removed back in April. So I, again, I don't think there's a legislative solution here. I think we could make some, some minor changes, we could create a threshold that would provide some relief for people on the North End. It hopefully would provide some relief if we can proceed with this in an administrative way. And we could talk about, consider the idea of doing some sort of longitudinal tracking of the cost of these projects. So let me stop here and see if there are any questions or comments about this.
I'll start with a quick question. I guess it's through, when you talk about Bethany having, you know, online, it's through their website that they're able to click on and, and draw all the information.
No, I don't.
Oh, okay.
No, I do not. I was suggesting that kind of approach is something that we might.
Yeah, I don't disagree. And Ms. Hanks, I see that you're on the line. Do you know of any online plugins that the website, that the town hall could use to track and to keep a database of, of building permit and permitting process?
I know of nothing. I've not spoken with any town locally that does cumulative tracking of their building permits. I know Bethany does, but I don't know how they do it. That would be something I would have to investigate. However, that is something that's recommended by FEMA, because what we have to realize is that the National Flood Insurance Program, the NFIP, is an insurance program. And so they want to be able to have homes as reasonably safe flooding. And so if there are property repairs, renovations, things of this nature that are done, and yet it, the house or the structure is not floodplain compliant, they, the federal government and the insurance companies that are under their control when it comes to flood insurance, they have to continually, continually pay out more and more in flood claims. And so they want homes, wellings, structures to be elevated so that those claims are on a minimal process or a minimal basis. They don't see them in a repetitive loss category. And that's something that the town has to document and so forth. And so I know of no agency that has any online applications that a resident or a property within a special flood hazard area can put in their, their information, and they immediately get a, get a permit. Many times, what takes place, and this is information given to me by FEMA, and then also, also by, that many times, property owners may want to do maintenance, which is really simply upkeep of something that's existing, that's many times different than repair, which is a, up to standards for safety purposes. And so as a result, FEMA has stated that many times, the intent by the owner is to repair or maintain something, but once they get into that project, something else creeps in, and another improvement needs to be done. Or the property in and of itself may want to have an improvement done by something that is below what's the, what's called the base flood elevation, that FEMA says you have that great chance of being flooded out. So that many times, it's a mushrooming effect, and FEMA, I have not found any encouragement by FEMA or by DENRECK, except by what we see in the literature, is that all things need to have an application, an evaluation of that application by the local town officials in our case.
Well, I'd like to ask for us to investigate the possibility of, if there are other, if there's software out there, if there are other plugins for a website that we could move to an online permitting process to track it, and so that a resident could easily go in and put the information, and for your, you know, that ultimately to get a permit to be compliant with FEMA, based upon the value, and/or expedite and improve upon your internal process. What do we need? So I'd assume that we could therefore also track it from a database perspective.
Don't we already have an online permitting system in the cloud?
Our permits are currently done online, correct, Don?
There's two ways. An individual can submit an online application that has a separate email address, our permit technicians open up that email and start processing that. So that's one way. The second way is someone can physically walk into town hall and fill out that paper application. And either way, there's always a paper application that is ultimately kept on file and scanned in our.
I'm asking something a little different. I thought the town has a system in the cloud where all the permits we issue are kept in that system in the cloud, and you know by address or parcel ID what permits have been issued for that home. Is that not true? I thought we had that system in the cloud now.
We do have it through our admin system, and I do believe it is in the cloud. However, we have to scan in paper documents into that particular program.
Okay. So I guess I'm wondering, this whole 50% requirement, wouldn't that be the source for the data?
For the data, right.
For the data for the 50% requirement?
Well, without evaluation by a, an official, a town staff member, we do not know whether each of those permits would, at the time of a major renovation, equals a substantial improvement or damage evaluation or not. Or over time, we would have to try to find a way, which I do not know at this moment, to be able to track from today's date and then five years from now, what a total would be. I don't know if our current software program does such a thing. I would have to invest.
What's, I mean, I get your point about the look back and having better flood protection and all of that, and so I get that point, but I look at our building official and how kind of overwhelmed they've been these past few years, with everything going on, you know, issues with enforcement, because people just don't have the time to kind of, you know, do everything. And I'm just, I'm just wondering whether an additional administrative burden, if it's not required, given our staffing level, makes sense. And I, you know, it's, it's really a question, just because they're so overwhelmed as it is.
Well, you're talking about the longitudinal tracking as administrative burden?
Yeah, yeah, to track that 50% requirement every time.
Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, put that aside for a moment. We don't have to do that.
Okay.
The issue that I was initially trying to pursue here is that, I believe that there is nothing in any FEMA regulations that I'm aware of that says that you don't have the right to restore a damaged piece of property back to its pre-damaged condition. I think you certainly can do that. The only, the only additional criteria is there is that, is the cost of the damage so large that exceeds the 50% threshold. So the thought here was that, okay, if we set a threshold of $7,500, and we say that, you know, you need to tell us, you need to tell the town what the total cost of that, what that repair item is, what, what are you going to be doing? And if the cost of that is less than $7,500, you can get a permit for that. There are always, even now, there's certainly going to be mushroomed issues. There are always, even now, there's certainly going to be mushroomed issues. You know, there's any, there's always a possibility that somebody engages in a repair for which they've received a building permit. And once they get into that, they find some other issues that they have to address. So I don't know that you would be any less aware under the kind of system that I'm suggesting than, of those mushroomed issues, any less aware of it under a new somewhat streamlined system than you are now.
Okay.
I mean, I could be wrong about that, but, and even if we do something administratively simple for projects that are $7,500 or less, or $3,500 or less, if we decide to go with materials costs, you still would have the ability, I believe, to inspect that property if you have some concerns, you know, once you begin to review some of these things and the work that's been done, I think you still have the ability to inspect and take action as a result of that. So you don't have any less authority or ability in that regard.
So the, when you were saying $7,500, you were referring to, $7,500 is a clip level mention in the ordinance, Friday number five, correct? Or were you talking $7,500 or something else?
Yeah, I mean, the Charter Code Review Committee decided, or recommended rather, that we increase the $1,000 exceptions, the exception that is currently in Section 71-4 for materials costs, $3,500.
Okay.
The question is, is that really easy to track or would it be better just to go to a total project cost, which I think is much easier information to get?
It sounds easier, but it's not from my perspective for one reason, and that is labor costs are fungible. Materials costs are much less fungible. So, you know, the reality is there are a portion of people who will try to kind of figure out a way to kind of get around the clip level. And the materials costs, you can be like, I'm sorry, but, you know, we know what the materials cost for this is, it's over $3,500, you need to have a permit for that. Labor costs, candidly, they can be fungible. So I definitely think that we should keep to materials costs. I think it's something that's a little bit more concrete. I don't really have an issue. I want the town's recommendation on whether they support the $3,500, you know, perspective. I don't really have any big heartburn with it, but I want to know how they feel. I mean, obviously there's some permit revenue that kind of goes away. But on the other hand, these low-cost billing permits can take a lot of time and if they're not really worth the time, maybe it makes sense.
Costs more than we collect.
Yeah. So I just want the town's input on that.
We don't, as far as I know, there's no way of looking at the fact of the $3,500 materials cost exception or threshold. But you can look at total cost and you're asking, the town has done analysis of total cost and $700 or $7,500 is not a big hit on town evidence. So that's why I was suggesting that two kind of thresholds. But I'm not aware of any analysis that the town could do based on materials costs. Is that?
So we did the one that you were referring to, and really we found things that were under really $6,000. We really didn't lose, if that goes away, we don't lose any money. But materials, when we asked, you know, when Dawn or Jim asked for, you know, how much does this cost, materials, wherever they get it, there's going to be a receipt that shows an invoice for materials. Labor, they could just say, well, my friend's doing it for me at this price and now they're not up to $7,500. I think it's, I like to, I personally, and Dawn and Jim should weigh in on this, the $3,500 for material definitely needs to be, you know, $1,000 up to $3,500. It's been over 10 years since we've raised the material cost. So we definitely need to go to at least $3,500 on material. But I'd like to hear Dawn and Jim talk about the labor piece.
I would like to make a comment on that. First of all, we can't get an actual, actual picture of labor. A lot of times the homeowners will say, well, we're going to do all this work ourselves.
Right.
And so that's, that's one of the things. Or we're going to do it based upon cost and materials. So we have the labor as a separate and they don't tell us that till the end of the thing, the project. I do want to caution people by saying that even if we did agree that $3,500 is the limit and everything, and that's fine, that includes labor and everything, great. But we don't, we can't just issue a permit on our own. Some of these costs have, at least the work, has to be referred to the county. Because, for example, I had one permit the other day that probably go to the county was $3,200. Doesn't seem like a lot of money, but it had to do with an upper deck that they were doing. And so that requires the county to go in and take a look at that. They come out and actually will inspect an upper deck with railings and so forth. So it depends. Some of those we can approve on our own. For example, a minor roof, we don't send that, a roof to repair or an HVAC, we don't send to the county. Those things are simple, but it doesn't alleviate the process of sending something to us and we're going to go automatically issue a permit. Some we send over there. But the labor cost is the biggest problem that we have. And most contractors, you know, on big projects, they're very good about that. It's the small projects we just don't know. And I had to stop, I had to stop somebody the other day when they were installing a small repair. They didn't have a permit for it, so we didn't know. So we have to go and tell them that they have to, at least give us information. So negating permits, I think is going to help us a whole lot. The code enforcement's going to go out and see a truck out there doing something and they're going to stop them and see what's going on. So those are my comments. And labor, I don't, we don't get straight answers until after the project is done.
Commissioner Bauer, Jim.
Yeah. Gary, on, you know, from an administrative standpoint, I think that's the path we need to take this. But, you know, I'm trying to put myself in the shoes of, you know, I, you know, I'm at the bottom cork or the rudder or starboard and what are the things, the might, what, you know, they have broken toilets all the time, a light fixture, a railing's loose. I mean, we could probably come up with a list of things that says, this is what we're going to call minor. And if it's under this amount, no permit. Probably wouldn't hurt to talk to somebody at the NFIP to say, hey, if we do this as a blanket, is this going to affect us? Or how, you know, how can we define this that, you know, putting in a new toilet doesn't substantially change property value of your house or your business? So, I mean, you know, we know what minor is. It's just a matter of coming up with the language of what is minor. And to me, that's an administrative task and that takes a burden off of Jim and Dawn to do all these minor things. All right, I mean, they got plenty on their plate right now, more things to worry about than, you know, a $50 permit on something. So, so I think that's the path we can go if we can come up with some language to do.
Commissioner Presser.
Well, I mean, I know, anybody else have comments? I haven't one to apologize.
No, I, well, the only thing, but, go ahead, Dawn.
Sorry to interrupt. I don't know how to do it gracefully. In a FEMA document, FEMA P, Publication P213, question number 16 asks, and this is available to all the public, what items must be included in the cost of improvements or repairs? And so with that, I'm assuming you can still hear me?
Go ahead, Dawn.
Yes.
Okay. Bullet point number one, it talks about the following list characterizes the types of costs that must be included. And the first one says, materials and labor, including the estimated value of donated or discounted materials and owner or volunteer labor. So I do feel that that is something that is relevant to our discussion and needs to be taken into consideration. And this is within the FEMA document, P213.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with that. But coming back to what Paul just said, we cannot create a threshold below which you don't get, you don't need a permit. We can't do that. FEMA says, says no. What we're trying to do is, we certainly could create a category of repairs. I think virtually most internal, inside repairs could be done. Repairing your steps, repairing your toilet, repairing your sink, refinishing a floor. These are things that really have no bearing on the flow of floodwaters.
But I'm confused. We already do have a threshold which you don't need a permit, the materials cost of $1,000.
That $1,000 does not apply to any property in the flood zone. And it's my understanding, I'm talking to Dawn, that she has never exempted any project based on that $1,000 threshold for a property in the flood zone. If you read the language, the language in Section 101 requires a permit for everything based on that very broad definition of development. And there's also language in Section 101 that says, if there's a conflict within the code, the more restrictive language is what you need to adhere to. And that more restrictive language is in Section 101. So, and again, in our discussions with FEMA, they care about everything, but, and they want to be able to track that information if the municipality is willing to do that. The whole objective here is to reduce flood damages, as Dawn said earlier. They want more properties to abide by the floodplain regulation. So if you, so they want you to move, elevate those properties.
So based on what you just said, my understanding would be the ordinance has proposed in item five, wouldn't matter because 101 overrules it because almost everybody's in a flood zone.
Two-thirds of the properties approximately are in floods. And that is my interpretation, if there's a, you know, a different interpretation. Let me hear, but I think that's, I think that's correct. And all I'm trying to do here is, you know, is we could define a certain set of types of repairs so that, you know, the rusty rudder or, you know, any of the other businesses here who suffer some sort of damage on a regular basis could repair that damage. And if it's below $7,500, they could do that on a very efficient basis without having code enforcement come around and try to assess what's going on. There would be documentation at that point. The hope is that, you know, the property owner could go online and say, total cost of this work is less than $7,500. This is a description of what I want to do, this, or what I need to do, this is the exact cost. They could go ahead and get that done.
And they get a building permit.
And they would get a, they would get a permit. They could get something like that online. That's what I've been trying to promote, but I know that there are technical details in terms of trying to implement something like that, but.
Well, let Town Hall work through. So in order to be, if I understand, you know, one, there's two things here. In order for us to be compliant with FEMA, everything should go through this permitting process, everything should be documented.
For properties and.
For property, including commercial, residential and/or commercial.
Yes.
Correct. So I think there's two things. One, let's look into what system we have, if there's a database that tracks it, how do we promote that and get people, so that we're compliant, there's not an issue. That's the first thing. But that is more administrative, let's see what happens. The second thing would be, because you're basically saying that you're going to need a permit for everything regardless, the question is, do you have permit fees associated right now? Right now it's for anything over $1,000. And the suggestion is to take it to $3,500 for.
If you do materials costs.
Do material costs.
You could do total, total cost of, say, $7,500.
So you still get a permit if there's no fee?
Correct.
Okay. I thought we're doing no permit.
So we, no matter what we do, we need to change this language in the code so that people who do read the code don't look at 71-4 and say, why are you making me get a permit?
Right.
You know, because right now, I'm telling you, until this meeting, I thought if it's under $1,000 material cost, you don't even have to call the town, just make sure your contractor's licensed. That's what, that's what I always thought it was, because that's.
Are you admitting anything at this point?
I'm not admitting anything.
I will, I will admit it, I've got it.
All right. So I think there's an administrative side that we do need to, administrative communication. I do think we need to go out there and have a conversation that if you, you have to have permits, period. And if it is that, even if it's, in the case of which I believe the code says, if you have an emergency roof repair, repair your roof, get a permit afterwards, you know, if that needs to happen. So the organizations like the rudder setter can go in and put in what they've done to their property and that it makes us compliant, it makes them compliant in terms of what they do. But the question is, with this agenda item, do we want to raise the threshold on, you know, for paying for permits from $1,000 to $3,500? But also, I think you said, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, if you're in a flood zone, you have to pay and get a permit regardless of the $1,000 threshold right now.
That, yeah, I'm not aware of any situation where Dawn has exempted, exempted any project in flood zone based on that threshold.
Yeah, I mean, everything I'm hearing is that just because of the FEMA rules, we're not going to be able to make this easy. You know, I mean, that's, that's what I'm hearing, is we can't make it easy because of FEMA's rules and that.
The other thing that, you know, worries me a little bit too is that we're talking about administrative solutions and, you know, we have, Dawn is both our building official and our floodplain administrator, and it's her job that we're talking about and we can't really tell her how to do her job. You know, we have to get her buy-in and have her feel comfortable with what we're trying to do here.
And I think it would be more confusing if we have a two-tier system within the town that flood zone, flood zone people, you have to, these rules, and non-flood zone people, you have to do these rules. And, because people are already confused about building permit.
We already have different, different height limits. It's 35 feet in the Northern, Northern, and 32 feet above base flood elevation plus one for the preboard and.
But if people are already confused about building permits, what they need to get them for, this is just an extra level of complication. That's what I'm saying.
Sure. But as, no matter what we do, it's complicated.
We need to queue work.
You know, what, what we could do, you know, with this list that you're talking about, one is we have to change the language in 71-4 because I think it's just, it's not fair to people to have that in there and then have something else conflict with them that they are aware of. But we could have on the town website, something called a streamlined permit is available and have a list of these things that you're talking about and just have a PDF that they can fill out. That just makes it easier for them to fill out the PDF and it still goes through the permitting process, but if it's not on this list, you got to do this more complicated, you know, building permit thing. But we could have a streamlined permits for these things and just let people fill that out on a PDF and send it in, you know, might be, that might help a little bit.
So we'll look at, ask Town Hall to look into determining what they can do to streamline the process, but it has nothing to do with this agenda item, number five, in terms of amounts, because we're still saying that regardless of the amount, you need a permit.
It's not a big benefit to doing.
In a flood zone, you still, you still need a permit, yes.
Yeah, I mean, there's not a big benefit to changing the limit, why change it, you know?
Well, I mean, there may be some, there are homeowners in the Northern who may benefit from this as well by changing.
That's true, because there's a, there are a large number of people who are not in the flood zone. But again, I think to the two-tier point, you know what I mean, it creates a level of.
More confusion.
Of confusion and complication. And let's keep in mind, a building permit at $3,500 costs, what, 100, 150 bucks, 100 bucks?
Well, you know, because it's based on the total cost of the project.
Well, okay, let's, let's say the project costs $5,000. It would be 150, is that right? So the reality though is because someone in town needs to review everything that goes through anyway, because they have to make sure, okay, this is on the list and we're not having a FEMA problem and they haven't given us a serial set of 100 different building permits to try to get around the cumulative rule or whatever, there is still going to be some annual review and the town should be able to have a fee associated with the annual review, you know, there could be some level of review. So I don't, I, I like having the threshold when I was under the impression that people could just skip the building permit process and say, I don't have to go through this hassle and the town didn't have to worry about it either, right? But what you're saying is the town's always got to be worried about it, which means the town always has to spend time.
For flood zone.
Time with people.
I mean, I don't, personally, I don't have a problem with doing, you call it a two-tier system, I just think it's, there are a few more requirements in the flood zone than if you're in the North End. And I just think that's kind of the way it is now. And I don't know that we would be exacerbating that situation terribly by trying to streamline the process of different projects that are below a certain threshold, you know, for, there is some relief if, you know, if you're doing a $5,000 project, you know, you're in the North End, you can do that without a building permit. You don't have to worry about it.
Right.
And if you're, if you're in the flood zone and it's $5,000, if you can tell the town that this is, you're replacing a door, you're refinishing a floor, you're repairing your steps, you should be able to get, and here's the cost of that, you should be able to get a permit and be able to proceed with the work without any additional, right, problem of, you know, that's, that's my feeling. But again, it's the town's job to administer this and, you know, the town has to be comfortable with doing this.
So you proved in our, is it came in?
Yeah.
You proved in our budget for us to hire an additional person to review this paperwork. Dawn has selected a person that, we went through an interview process, that person has been hired and they will start and they will take some time to train. There definitely is, is a difference between the flood area, flood zone area and the non-flood zone. We have to have that difference. I mean, we have to because it's the way FEMA wants us to do it. The $3,500 for material, I think is, is the best way to go. As Jim and I explained, labor is a little tough. Somebody said, well, I'm going to do it and do it for this price for labor. Because somebody said, well, I'm going to do it, and do it for this price for labor to keep them under this certain amount, right? Even though Dawn said we're supposed to look at what they're doing and try to figure out what the cost should really be, even though they're charging much less. And we shouldn't have to do that. So I think the material is where we need to stay at 3,500. And then the last thing is, and I've always said this, if it's an emergency repair, whether it's at a business or a home on the weekend in the off hours, they can do the emergency repair. I've gotten calls about it on the weekends, I've gotten calls about it at night, they can do the repair, it's just if it meets that criteria, come in Monday and just do the paperwork, that's all.
All right. So all that being said, I think we've got some work at Town Hall in terms of understanding what is and what is not, requires a permit, whether it's north or in the flood zone. And we're going to work through to see also, see how we can further automate it, automate it and see if there's a database that we can pull in, because I think that's, I assume there is, but, you know, Dawn, maybe this coming week, just take a look at it, whether there's a trackable database that, in terms of the cumulative amount of changes that are made. But I don't see any reason why, for this particular reason, we don't, because of the recommendation, we improve, we increase the amount from 1,000 to 3,500 from the permitting process, or?
I think that's fine, the only thing I would do is reflects David's comment, is I did have somewhere in here some short additional language which would include the exception of $3,500, but would refer people back to any conditions that are in section 101 of the town code.
Should we just say unless the property is located in a flood zone or something?
Yeah. I have, oh.
Oh, you're, that one?
Yeah, I'm trying to find my original email that I sent to Town Manager. I sent it to you as well, but I've got several emails on this same subject.
You, the one with the definitions, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, it's, I think so.
Got it, if you need it.
I think, oh.
You highlighted them in yellow?
I think, yeah, no, I think I just found it. Yeah, then section, a building permit shall not be required for maintenance or repairs requiring less than $3,500 of material costs, comma, subject to any requirements in section 101 flood damage reduction. So that would get you back to section 101. It tells you if your, your project is $3,500 or less in material cost, you need to go back and, if you're in a flood zone, check any requirements that are in section 101. At least makes reference to that so that it draws the distinction. The other thing we would need to do though is, is we don't have maintenance defined, and we don't have repairs defined. There are some suggested definitions that came from the Charter and Code Review Committee. I suggested eliminating the word "normal," which is in the current version of the code. I, I just don't know that there's any specific meaning to look for "normal."
Everyone's "normal" is different?
Everyone's "normal" could be different. I like to change the oil on my sofa regularly.
All right. Do we have a motion based upon what's been put forth regarding section 714 building instruction?
One question before the motion, just so Dawn and I are clear on this, if you raise it to $3,500, you still need a permit. Am I wrong on that interpretation? We just won't charge for it?
If it's in the flood zone.
I think, well, I think we have to add.
We, we need some language, reflect back to requirements in section 101 flood damage reduction, which means therefore that you do need a permit, but we can make this such that you don't have to, I mean, you have to pay the fee.
Commissioner, would it be, should we just take that, where it says $3,500 of materials cost and just say unless the property is located in a flood zone? And then would that satisfy the need for people to refer to the other section regardless of like, I don't get an exemption?
Well, you said originally, subject to the requirements of chapter 101, was a different way of saying that.
Well, but my point is, I'm, I'm thinking of the person who reads the code, who doesn't know.
And it's a little better.
It just kind of, it makes it clear.
You understand English, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess my question really is, it's not what you were bringing up just for the flood zone. How do we determine when somebody files a concern about a neighbor doing some work, that they have, they met the criteria or they didn't need the criteria for the $3,500? How do, how does code enforcement get involved in that?
Well, how do you do it now with a $1,000 threshold?
We ask, we, we go in and we ask and see if they've had a permit. That's the only thing we can do, we ask questions. And, you know, it's an honor system is really what you're saying, which is fine. I just want to be clear, that's the way it's going to be, and well, you know, I don't even know why we should file, why anybody should file a complaint, because it's very subjective. Unless we have paperwork, we don't know what's going on.
So you don't ask for receipts for the materials or something?
We will, well, it depends on what they do. Normally, people give us an application, we look at it and say, it's fine, and usually there's an attachment that says what the, and some of them, you know, some, we actually will say, go ahead, we know, we know it's a minimal project, go ahead and do it. Somebody wants to replace screens, we don't care, just tell us what's, what you're doing. But that's the small stuff, that when you hit up the $3,500, you're talking a little bit more. My point, my point is how do we determine when a complaint is legitimate or not legitimate?
So to answer your question, we do ask for invoices and receipts to be attached to the application.
Okay.
We do ask for that. Sometimes we get them, and if they don't, then Jim or the new person will look at them and go, well, no, I want to see some receipts on this, how much is this costing? Right? You say it's this much, but let's see what the material cost is going to be.
And with this, you would need to show receipts showing it's less than 3,500?
Certainly if you're challenged, yeah.
You know, right, right now, we issue permits for trees and pruning, no problem. And we get them all the time, and they're done very quickly. That's not a big issue for us, as long as we understand what's going on. But we, we do ask for documentation.
Well, I mean, is you're, is you're concerned that if, if we do this on what you describe as an honor system, so that if someone has a project in the north end that is less, they believe is less than $3,500 in material cost, are you concerned that you're going to be losing information now that you get now, but you won't have in the future? May, would it not be sufficient just if there is a complaint for you then to investigate that complaint and see if there is any substance to it?
I guess that, I guess, my, my concern is we don't know what's going on, and we do get questions about it, you know, so-and-so have, it's sort of like a tree, if the tree comes down, people ask us, what's going on? If they see construction vehicles in front of a house, they're going to ask us, where's the permit? It's a typical question that we get all the time, do they have a permit? So, it's going to be more of an administrative issue, I think Dawn and I will just have to address it if that's what you want us to do.
I think that's the direction to go.
What are your thoughts, Commissioner Bursinger?
Well, I, I guess I'm a little concerned in this way, at least if you had some information from a property owner, if they had to file something with you that said, I'm going to do this project, I'm going to take care of, build new steps, and the cost of materials is $3,000. If you had that information, you would have at least some information to respond to a complaint. If somebody comes to you and says, well, what's going on here? Do they have a permit or don't they? You can then tell them, this is the project that they're doing, this is the cost of that project, it's within our, within our town code, so, you know, we don't have a, have an issue with it. Clearly, if it's something much larger, you know, you're, you're going to have all of the information that you have now to respond to anybody.
I think there is a way.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think there's a way we can do that. We get an application telling us this is what they're going to do, we can log it into our computer system and issue, and give them a permit with no cost, they don't even have to pick up the permit, that's the way we can look at it, if somebody calls up. There is, you know, I'm just doing this on the wing, I think it's going to be, we need to work on this, Dawn and I, as to the best way to handle something like this, so that we can know that, yeah, they, they contact us, that I don't know they're doing it, and everything's cool. So, you know, we can keep an internal permit. That's the only way we can track it.
Well, I mean, we have an exception now in, in the code, $1,000. Do, do you get, you know?
Yes.
Where people claim that, that level of material cost and therefore ask to be exactly what it is?
Some people will call us, some people won't call us, it just depends. If it's under 1,000, we're not issuing a permit, I can tell you that right now, but people will call us and let us know what's going on. When you up at the 3,500, you're talking about a little more work that's going into a home, that's all.
And we don't know what the, we don't really know what the level of financial loss would be to the town.
It's not minimal, but.
Well, I mean, we don't have the information now, we don't have any, any file of information that says this is the material cost for this set of projects. We don't track that, we track total cost.
Right, we, and, you're right, based on what we provided to Charter and Code, that was the total cost. But it was less than $6,000, we weren't losing, we, it was very little, it was less, $4,500 for the whole year, it was very little.
For projects under $3,500?
No, projects under 6,000. When we looked at, when we looked at it, right, most of it was above that. When you got to 6,000 and below for projects, it was very little loss to the town.
So I'm not sure we can move forward on this point, just to explain, just hear me out for a minute. What Gary, Commissioner Bursiger's put forth is that in a flood zone, it is required that all permits, all changes, all improvements that are made to a property, all developments and things that you said, need to go through the permitting process. So our attempt to, to kind of mitigate the process and to make it easier for residents as well as Town Hall, doesn't happen with the large percentage of our, of our residents, that's true. So why change the process if we, because the permitting process and the fees that are generated, we're not meant to be a revenue builder, it's meant, meant to just cover the cost of the, of the permitting office, and for them to review everything. So if they still have to review it regardless of whether it's $1,000, $1,500, $2,000, $2,500, $3,000, then why make this change at all?
Well, the question is, is try to set a threshold at which they don't have to review it, and to encourage, you know, better compliance with, and to have better information.
So FEMA doesn't require you to review the permit? So would it assume?
It requires a, it requires a permit, it doesn't specify specifically the process, I believe, that you have to go through. Clearly, for a big project, you know, a very expensive project, the review process and monitoring and regulatory process is going to be a lot more intensive than something that's less than $3,500 in material cost. They're just, you know, again, the businesses came to us and said, you know, we don't believe FEMA really cares about these, these small projects, and, you know, we, we want to be good citizens, we want the town to have the information that they need, we don't mind paying the fee, but if you guys want to let that fee go for these small projects, that's fine. And so when we began to investigate it, we found that, well, FEMA does care about everything. And so we need to be cognizant of that. And, you know, we're trying to find a way to help the businesses and help other property owners as well, I mean, people who rent their property have these kinds of situations as well. Things go wrong, you know, when you have weekly rentals or bi-weekly rentals, and, you know, you need to have an immediate response. And, you know, you want to have a long, torturous permitting process for something to replace a toilet or sink or, or something like that. So we were just trying to create some efficiencies for, for the property owners. This was not, we're only creating a threshold so that we could, you know, begin to identify when those projects were sufficiently minor, that we could really afford to give up the revenue associated with the application.
So how do we move forward?
Well, I mean, we certainly could, could raise the, the threshold. We would have to make a reference to directing people back to the section 101 flood damage reduction, or, you know, directly, if they have their property is in the flood zone, to this exception would not apply to them necessarily. If we could leave this at maintenance, we could add repairs to that, so make it a little clearer, but then we have to define, we have to define maintenance anyway, but we would have to add definitions for repairs, so that that's clear in the context of the current.
Well, I'm finding, well, to me, that gets in a whole, again, a mix of words, whether it's a project, it's repair, it's or maintenance, it's still a developmental cost associated with FEMA for, so.
Right.
It doesn't, so I think we confuse, unfortunately confuse things by further defining them.
Well, but if, if you want to build something new, you know, something that doesn't exist there now, if you want to build something new, then that would not be covered by this exception.
Okay. So with that, so there's no doubt based upon this, we need to work with Town Hall and to determine how to become compliant from FEMA's requirements, as well as to make sure to simplify the process, whether it be online or look at the database. So I'll ask Council if there's going to be a motion to, to make the amendment to increase the threshold from 1,000 to 3,500 outside of the flood zone. Is there a motion, or is there not?
Do you have language, Commissioner Bursinger, that you would want a motion to do this and add language to your, to the ordinance that's there?
I mean, I, I have language, you know, hearing the comments from the town, I'm just not comfortable right now suggesting that we increase the threshold to $3,500 without talking it through a bit more, making sure that.
That's fair.
And we're comfortable with it.
And motion to table.
The administrative process, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
He said it.
Let's get more information, let's table it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
That was easy.
That was, yeah, 30 minutes later, thanks Gary. You really don't want to go home, do you?
No, 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 just waiting for that high school reunion back at my house.
All right. You know, number six, just, it was discuss and possibly vote to request the planning zone review of recommendations regarding swimming pool setbacks referred by Charter and Code. That, that particular line item has been, has been removed from today's agenda to seek additional input from the committee, unless there's anyone here that would like to make a comment about it.
Okay.
Anybody on the line?
All right. Number seven, discuss and possibly vote to reappoint Mike Harmer as Chairperson of the Planning Zone Commission for a term for three years.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss possibly vote on an ordinance to amend chapter 80 of the code regarding personal use quantity of marijuana to align with recent changes to state law. I'll turn this over to Council.
So back in 2016, I think the commissioners decriminalized possession of personal use quantities of marijuana. Since then, state law has been amended further to, to decriminalize it further. So that's requiring us to make some amendments to our code, and that's what this represents. There is no crime presently under state law for use of personal use quantities of marijuana if you are above the age of 21, and not utilizing the, not utilizing marijuana in a prohibited area. This, so that forces us to make an amendment to our code, so what we've done is, again, it's still decriminalized to an extent. First offense is, is $100 civil penalty, second is between 2 and 5, $100 civil penalty, and a third offense is an unclassified misdemeanor with a small fine. But this law now can apply only to persons under the age of 21 years.
So simply put, this is amending an ordinance that's already in place to reflect inconsistency between what we do and what the state of Delaware does.
Good.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I have just a question. So the, the first and second violations would not be unclassified misdemeanors?
They, they're civil penalties, so they're lesser, like.
They're not on the record.
Their fines.
Okay. All right. Why is, what's the purpose of the last sentence here? A peace officer having reasonable grounds to believe that a juvenile has committed a violation of the subsection, may issue a civil citation and will have a civil penalty. So, and to distinguish those, a civil citation, that's not classified as citing for a misdemeanor? So and to distinguish those, a civil citation, that's not classified as citing for a misdemeanor? That's, I'm, I'm just not clear what this means.
They're going to get a civil citation for the, with the new law changes. Obviously it didn't affect anybody under 21. So they can, we can write on our civil citations that we have for the town, we can have that added as ordinance and we can mark it off and put it on the civil citation. Marijuana's always been, since they changed the laws in the last several years, it's been, they changed it from criminal to civil. It used to always be a crime, you'd get a criminal citation or be arrested, taken in person custody and, and go through the process. Then it was changed to a civil violation. Basically, we're just trying to address the fact that adults are allowed to have marijuana in a certain quantity, but do, anybody under 21 is not. So we wanted to add that to our civil citations in town so we can just use it as a checkoff box and issue them a civil citation. That's what we're trying to do there.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I guess I have broken enough laws to understand.
You're asking what's the difference between a civil citation and a civil penalty?
Yeah, yeah, what happens if you get a civil citation?
In lieu?
Does that mean you have to appear in court for something?
You have, you, you can pay it or you can take, you can take it to court, yes, but it's a civil, it's civil.
Civil.
It's not going to go on your record as a criminal violation. A civil penalty.
So what's the, the purpose of, of a peace officer having, what would be reasonable grounds that, for making a distinction between a civil citation and a civil penalty? What, why, why would we have that language in there? Why would?
I don't know, I don't know why the civil penalty is in there, a civil citation has a penalty with it, so I'm not really sure why it's worded with civil penalty. So your civil citation, you're getting a penalty, you're getting a fine associated with it. So I don't know why it's worded that way, I, I can't.
In lieu of is what throws us off.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to, it's the same thing, civil citation comes with a fine. So I don't know what the, what the civil.
You're just going to get one ticket.
Penalty, you're only going to get one thing and it comes with a fine with it, so that's how the courts, this wording came from the courts, correct? Exactly the same? That was my understanding?
I think, this has been, it's been a long time, but I think this language did, is meant to mirror the criminal code, the state criminal code.
Yes.
But that's not a very good answer as to what, what it means.
I don't understand it, I love, so, well, that's one issue. The other issue is in this, in paragraph B, uh, the end of this, it talks about, in addition to such routine assessments necessary for the administration of civil violations, I, what does that mean?
I'm sorry, one more time?
It's the end of paragraph B, where it said, the whole paragraph is, any person under the age of 21 uses or possesses drug paraphernalia, for the use of, or possession of a personal use quantity of marijuana shall be assessed a civil penalty of not more than a hundred dollars. In addition to such routine assessments necessary for the administration of civil violations, what is the last part of that mean?
So I, I believe that, yeah, that's right.
Court costs and victim witness.
Right.
Like speeding tickets, there's an association with the fine, then there's a court cost, there's a victim witness amount that goes towards victims' funds.
Victim compensation.
That goes, and so this is just saying the administration, not only are you going to get penalized a hundred dollars, but there's also going to be at least something else on top of it to pay for the court cost, the victim fine in the administration of the ticket.
There's always the fine plus all the little extra costs, the court costs and stuff that they add to.
Okay.
That's how it's always done.
And that's common knowledge that that's what that means?
You get a speeding ticket, the speeding actual fine may be a hundred dollars, but you're going to pay 160, that's just an example of.
That's how the state of Delaware, that's how all those fines and everything are done.
Like Gary, I don't, haven't had that situation, so.
Need to break more laws.
I'm fine, I'm fine.
So the citation is where you got in trouble and the penalty is what you have to pay.
Yes.
So I'm not sure why in lieu of is there.
So is it, could it, could it mean that the juvenile could get a civil citation that doesn't include a civil penalty, it's just a citation, it just says?
That's what that sentence says.
No, they will get a, they will get a penalty.
Okay, well then I don't.
There's a fine associated with it.
But it's, this says that you can get a citation instead of a penalty. That's what that sentence says in English. Which is wrong now that we've discussed the terms.
I mean, I think.
Well, if this, I think, believe, depending where this documentation came, if it came from the same documentation as the, the Delaware code has written it, that's, that was written by Delaware code, so.
Somebody has to be tripping, I mean, if you're a police officer, Liz is telling you, you have the ability to do it. I don't know.
All right, so Fred, what would be the, what would be the harm in, in adopting the amendments but striking that in lieu of and have to be in lieu of? Does that not reach our goal of making it so that we're consistent with the state of
No, I think you would have the flexibility in eliminating that language. I don't think that language is what authorizes the peace officer to issue a civil violation.
I'll, I'll motion to take those in lieu of out of there.
So it's the last sentence?
Last sentence.
Just take the whole sentence out?
No, well, I think we're saying is that the sentence would end at issue the juvenile a civil citation, period.
Okay, well, you could do it that way too. I mean, I, I think it's understood that, that a civil citation could be issued, but maybe the safest thing to do would be just to place a period after civil citation.
And get rid of the in lieu of. Yep.
So all.
Motion to that.
Second. All right.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Comments? Commissioner Bauer?
I have no comments. Except nothing is easy for that.
Commissioner Gibbings?
I'm looking forward to the start of our summer season and wishing everybody a safe and joyful summer season.
Commissioner Jazinski?
This meeting was longer than I was thinking.
Yeah, I know.
That's your comment? Now it's that much longer still.
Commissioner, is that all you have?
That's all that we have.
I know you've tried to delay this meeting as long as possible.
I am hanging my head in shame for having extended the time of this meeting, so I do not have additional comments.
Okay. My only comment is to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day and a safe Memorial Day. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let me know when we're on.